Okay, and this is the meeting, September 11th, meeting of the North Hampton Zoning Board of Appeals. Board members present are myself, David Bloomberg, Elizabeth Silver, Maureen Scanlon, and Sherry Taylor, along with Nathan Chung from the City of North Hampton Office of Planning and Sustainability. This meeting is being recorded and we always start the hearing by inviting members of the public to give comments on matters other than the agenda item. So Nathan, do we see anyone else from the public here?
No, I do not see anyone else.
Okay, so seeing none, we'll move on to the one agenda item. And I'll ask, that item is the request for a special permit to convert a garage with insufficient setbacks into a second home by Eric Winkler at 105 Pine Street mapped by D 23A-140. This is a special permit, so it requires a super majority vote of three of three members. The three voting, full voting members are myself, Elizabeth, and Maureen. And and what I will, notice of this hearing was published on August 29th and September 4th. And I will ask first, anyone who addresses the board to identify yourself with a name and address for the record that's being kept. And we'll start by asking the applicant to give a brief description of the request for the special permit. Then board members will have an opportunity to ask questions. Then if there are members of the public, they will have an opportunity to comment. And then after that, we'll determine if we are going to close the public hearing and have a vote on the application for the special permit. So I will ask Mr. Winkler to just give us a brief.
I think if I can interrupt, I think Nathan had.
Nathan, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, minor correction, David. So the notice, the publication dates were August 28th and September 4th. You said 29th.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that correction. August, August 28th and September 4th were the dates that notice of this hearing was pub, were published. So we'll just ask Mr. Winkler, we've all received and reviewed your application and the related materials, but so we'll just ask you for a brief description. And then if we have more questions, we'll ask those questions.
Okay, great. Thanks for getting me on the agenda so quickly too. I know it's a quick turnaround. So my name is Eric Winkler. I'm a resident of North Hampton. I live at 105 Pine Street up in Florence. My wife and I have been residents in North Hampton since 1988, and we've lived in this Florence home for 31 years. 1994 is when we moved in here. We raised our kids here. And we, I am fully retired. My wife is still working a little bit. But fortunately for us as, as parents of children, our children return to the area. And we're staying here because they live here and our grandkids are here. So one of the things that my wife and I are trying to do is make sure that our living situation here is meeting our needs. And, and, and this project is one of those things that has come up. So what I first want to say is the garage that is part of this project, the 20 by 20 foot garage was built approximately 125 years ago. And it is in disrepair. The ground foundation is crumbling, it leaks. The building needs new siding, new roof. And on top of the fact that it's, it's in disrepair, it's inadequate for what we want to use it for. It's a 20 by 20 foot garage can just about hold two cars and nothing else. And we do have a couple of vehicles. I have a few motorcycles that are stored indoors. And so the space is inadequate for, for what we were looking for. And after talking to some builders and designers, we came up with a plan to build a 24 by 28 foot garage. As an accessory dwelling, we do have the four foot separation to property boundaries to build that structure. I believe the roof height has to be 20 foot at the midpoint. We, we are proposing 22 feet at the midpoint because we plan to build a second story. My wife would like to have a studio space. And so we plan to finish the second story and put a Douglas Mini split in to condition the space so that it's usable all year round. On top of that, my wife would like to have water in the, in the space so that she can do art projects with our grandchildren. And a bathroom would be nice in that space as well, so that in the middle of the winter, we don't have to trudge back through the snow to the house to use a restroom. So I think you can see the progression of this. We're, we're looking to build a second story and put a bathroom in. And the incremental cost to put a bathtub or a shower in and a small kitchenette is pretty small considering the overall cost for foundation, walls, roof, insulation. So that's what's, that's what's led us to the second dwelling is, is that we would like to make it a fully livable space. We don't really intend to rent it at this point in time. But in the long term, we see opportunity to utilize that space potentially for a home care person to live in, in our, when we reach our older ages, possibly for our children or grandchildren to utilize that space in, in times of need. So we're, we've landed on a need to, or, or a request to, to make it a second dwelling and utilize that space for, for, for the next bunch of years that we, that we're around here. So the, so the isolation distance, I believe, is 15 feet. We have the, the closest distance to the west, I believe, is 4.3 feet. And we're going to use the same foundation sort of layout in terms of where the new foundation goes, except it will be eight feet longer to the north and four feet longer to the west. On, just a few more details about the structure. We're, we're hoping to reclaim some of the wood from the existing garage. It's, it's lovely aged dark hickory. And we're hoping to utilize that inside potentially for the kitchen counters and cabinetry. Potentially some exposed shelving. And we also plan to make sure that the home is net zero energy. We will install solar panels. There's a full south facing roof line that's clear skies. So we, we think we can make it net zero as well. The last thing I'll say, you know, we, we intend as a dwelling, we have to follow the stretch code. So it will be highly insulated. It will be all electric. And it'll meet the fire codes for, for dwelling over, over garage as well as fireproof door. So let me just finally say, and I won't, I won't linger on this, but the, the criteria for approving the special permit, I believe, is this is no detriment to the, to the neighborhood or the existing non-conforming. And I think my neighbor, Mark Libertor, actually said it much better than I could even come up with, which is that we already live in a very dense neighborhood. Almost all the houses around me are non-complying. The primary dwellings are non-complying. My, my house, the primary house is two and a half feet to my neighbor to the west. Their house is less than five feet to the line as well. The Libertors and the O'Briens are also non-complying. Their houses are awfully close to their line. And my neighbor to the north, the Polans, they have a shared driveway. They have an ADU that they constructed, which is but for the fact that it's connected to the house via breezeway, is also not conforming to, to the lot line. And I believe there are a couple of other ADUs in the area that, that are pretty tight to the lines, but are connected to the primary home. So it's not the same situation. And the last thing I'll say is just in general, the neighborhood has lots of apartments. Of the houses that go up Maple Street from Pine, I believe there are eight pieces of property out of 12 or fewer that are all apartments with, with two or more apartments in each of those buildings. So it's a, it's a, and I have two, the two houses across from me are also apartments. So there's lots of multi, multi-dwelling structures. Most have non-conforming nature in their primary location to the, to the property boundaries. So we're in it, we're in a place where there's already a lot of non-conformity. And so my neighbors have indicated their support for the, for the project. And I, I would hope, I would hope that you could give us this consideration so that we can, we can make this, this change in this design.
Thank you.
I'll leave it for you.
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
Yeah.
I have a detailed question. Elizabeth.
No, 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 go ahead.
As I was looking through, and, and thank you, Eric, for that background, because it kind of filled in some gaps from what didn't fit into the, you know, standard forms you're submit, you submitted. But I had one question regarding the general information provided in your application that in the category called general information said demolish the 20 by 20 foot garage. It said the replacement structure will have same footprint of the existing garage. And then relative to lot lines. So I, I have thought of, and this could be my misinterpretation of footprint, but I thought of matching a footprint, meaning that it would, it would, the new structure would be 20 feet by 20 feet. It would match the footprint. And that's moot, I think, in terms of your application, but in terms of details and accuracy, I just would like to clarify, ask your clarification on that.
Sure. So I, I, I probably shouldn't have described it that way. What I, what I meant was that the new structure, which is proposed to be 28 by 24 feet, would, would occupy the, essentially the corners and the lines of the existing structure to the west and the south. So it'll be, you know, right now, that, that, that southeastern corner goes 20 feet to the north and 20 feet to the west. The new structure will go 28 feet to the north and 24 feet to the west.
That clarifies.
In the same, in the same orientation.
So it doesn't further encroach on the existing distance from the structure, current structure to the lot line, although the question at hand is why you're here before us is that now that you're applying for this to be used as a residence, that those, those, those clearances change.
Yeah. So the, the new structure shouldn't encroach any more than it, than it already does on the property. But for the fact that it's eight feet longer to the north and four, four feet to the west doesn't really impact the neighbors because it's coming onto the sort of bigger space of our lot.
Thank you. Nathan?
Yeah, if it helps the board, I can share the screen. The applicant submitted different plans, elevation and survey plan. Also additionally, one little technical detail, applicant said in the presentation that the height is 22 feet. In the plan the applicant submitted, it's actually slightly below 24 feet. So just a minor correction, but it's all in the, shown in the, in the elevation plan. So again, if the board wishes, I can share the screenshot with the. Yeah, yes.
So please.
Okay, great. One second. So I will share it first. The, would you like to see the elevation plan first or the site plan first?
I think we've seen the site plan, haven't we?
I think we've seen both. I think the site plan, well, you, you can point out, Nathan, which you think we should see.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's start with the elevation and then we're gonna start with the elevation and then I'll show the site plan. The elevation shows the height. One second. There you go. Do you see that?
No. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that was the one I was a bit confused by because they only show one side. My question, and I know none of the neighbors objected, I do understand that, is just the privacy of the neighbors. Is this going to impact them in any way, where the windows are, doors, et cetera?
I can help with that if you like.
Yes, please.
On the west side, so you're looking, you're looking from the west to the east.
Okay.
Onto the property. The south side, so this is to the right of the screen, you can see a dark area sort of midway around the, by that door. So there will be two, in the garage space, there'll be two small windows on the garage level above, above head height, kind of high transom windows, I guess, is what they're called. There won't be any windows on that six foot wall on the second floor to the, to the south.
Okay.
And that does respect, we, we did that intentionally because my neighbor to the southeast, that's their backyard. That's their, their kid's space. They have a little pair. So we don't need to see out there, but I wanted to have some light come in. So we, we propose to do the transom lights on the, on the garage level, just to let some natural light in there. On the eastern wall, we also propose to do some windows, but not, not an extensive amount of windows. So there's a transom window above the stairwell coming up from the garage to the second floor. And then there'll be a, a, just a regular, a small, a smaller window in the, in the space just on the landing as you come up the stairs. There'll also be a small window in the bathroom, which is behind the, the doors that you see on the left side. One of those, the, the, the right, the right door is a closet and the left door is a door into the ba, into the bathroom. So there'll be, and that, and that, of course, that window in that bathroom will be a privacy window because it's, it's a bathroom. So other than that, the, the windows to the north are face into our property, into the garden space. And the windows to the west, which will be more extensive because we'll let, that, that also faces our house, our, our main part of the property. So we, we did try and make sure that we afforded our neighbors privacy so that they don't feel like people are looking down at them from, from the house.
Thank you.
And I will see if I may, let me share the site plan and that way the orientation, the windows might be more clear. Give me one second. Yeah, there it is. And there you go. Do you see the site plan?
It's really small.
Oh, yeah, I can zoom in into the, so this is the proposed location.
Right. The structures, the other houses are quite a distance away.
Yeah, exactly.
So the description you were saying, Eric, about the south side with those two transom windows, that's basically facing the street, you know, way set back, right?
Well, their garage is between our garage on the street. If you scroll down a little bit, you see that.
So, right. So it might be if they have a single floor, single story garage, those windows might be above it. But it's not visible from
No.
the residents. They're not looking into your windows. You're not looking into theirs.
No. And, and Mr. O'Brien's house, which is to the immediate east, he, he has a small deck on the back of his house. And so we propose to put like a privacy screen on the stairs and well, probably on that, on this landing of the stairway going up from the outsides because we're gonna have a deck. We'll have a deck on the entrance to the second floor. But we'll put some privacy here so that the, if somebody's sitting on the deck or he's sitting on his deck, he's not looking at, he's not necessarily having to look at that.
Any other questions?
I just said a quick question. It makes absolutely no difference for our analysis, but in the application, you talked about having this as a living space, an ADU, and tonight you talked about it being a studio for your wife. So I was just a little confused about the use.
Well, we, we want to, we, we want to utilize the space as a, as a dwelling so that we can install full plumbing with a bathroom. And we felt that the incremental cost to add a kitchenette, given, given the sort of major costs for just doing a foundation and the structure itself were nominal. So, you know, we're not, it, it's possible that we could rent the space out as a living space, but we also have a, a vision of, of potentially, as I said, we, we might need a caregiver space to live on our property. I have a sibling who's going to be houseless in the next year or so. So there's, there's any number of chances that we, we would like to be able to use it as a dwelling, as a place where somebody can sleep and, and live. As well as, you know, if our family, our immediate family needs, needs a place to, to be and, and be independent of, of us, this, this provides, this provides that.
Thanks.
Any other questions? And I, Nathan, I assume we still do not see members of the public present who might.
Yeah, let me stop sharing the screen on this. Yeah, no, I don't see anybody. Just the board members and the applicant. Nobody else. He's present. Oh, and of course me.
And did we receive any comments from DPW or fire or police?
No, they did not comment.
Okay, no concerns presumably. And and we do note that there were numerous communications that are part of the, the city's file from abutters, all of which seemed to be strongly in support of the application from my reading. I think, did people have a chance to see those?
Yes, and that's correct.
Yeah, that's good. And, and we're not aware, Nathan, have you received any other communications that aren't reflected in the file from interested parties, either for or against the application?
No, the, the last one I loaded this morning, there were four household communications in favor and there were no other communication in opposition. So the ones you read in the morning, I think afternoon time, that should all be the ones, that's all the ones we received. So four in favor and no other opinions.
Okay.
And there, there are other abutters, at least one other abutter who did not write in, but also is not present in this meeting. So that speaks for itself.
Yep. So again, as, well, as a reminder, the standard that we are to apply is to make a determination that the proposed construction, the change in the use and the height increase would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions. And I, I agree with what has been said in tonight and in some of the comments in the file that it is a, already a, a pretty densely developed neighborhood, which is something that the City of North Hampton favors, by the way, and in, in Florence and in the center of North, center of Florence, center of North Hampton. Do, do we think we have enough information to, for a motion to close the public hearing, which would mean no more input from the applicant or any, anyone else other than board members?
I don't have any other questions. I'm satisfied with the information we have.
Okay, so do we have a motion to close the public hearing? And then we'll talk after that about a motion on the, on the application itself.
I'll, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, second.
I don't know if you can, Sherry.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
It doesn't matter to me.
That's another, other item for another day.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Right. Is that right, Nathan, that it has to be one of the other three?
To be safe, if the three members are voting, the, one of the voting members.
Sorry, Sherry.
I may.
All right, I'll move to close the public hearing.
One second.
Okay, and we'll, we'll need a roll call vote since we're remote.
If I may, just for my clarification, would the applicant mind just briefly pointing out on the site plan where the windows, the shorter windows are gonna be? This is just for my records. I apologize. Would that, would that be okay with the?
Oh, sure. But do you want, do you need, do you want to call up? Do you want to put it, share the screen again for that?
Oh, yes, of course, of course. Yeah, sorry, of course.
That's right.
Yeah. So, yeah, applicant and board, do you see the, it should go, yeah. Yeah, do you see the, so Eric, do you mind like just roughly pointing out where the windows are gonna be? Let's start with this side that faces the neighbor's rear yard.
Okay, so on the south side where your cursor is, right where your, right where your cursor is?
Yeah, this one?
Well, let me, I don't have the exact location like footage wise, but essentially there'll be two transom windows along that 24 foot length. You know, spaced evenly from the ends. Is that?
Yeah.
Is that clear? And then on the, on the east facing line, the 28 foot on the east, there'll be, there'll be a transom window. I'm just gonna say approximately eight, eight feet from the southern end of that side. And then there'll be a, you know, like a double hung window in the middle of the 28 foot, kind of at the top of the stairs. But still on the east side. And then on the, and then I'd say approximately eight feet, six to eight feet from the north, there'll be another, another window on, on the east line into the bathroom. There, there are, there will be windows on the, on the north side and the west side, but I don't think you were asking about, about those.
And so for clarification, when you say north, because I believe so, when you say north and west side, do you mean this side and this side?
Yeah.
The one that's.
Correct.
Or is north? Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah.
We, we do plan to put a, a large like picture window on the west, the west side facing, you're facing into the property with some smaller windows to the side of it. And then on the north side, there'll be, there'll be double hung windows. A couple of double hung windows kind of over the deck, and then there's a doorway.
Yeah.
On the nor, on the north side.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. So basically the, the side that faces the neighboring properties, you are gonna have more limited transom windows?
Yeah, there'll be one, so facing the east, there'll be one, one transom window, one double hung window at the, basically the top of the stairs. And then another privacy window in the bathroom section, that northeast corner.
Okay.
Sometimes we get, we, so Nathan, we do not have elevation showing all four sides in the.
Do, I, I have images of that if you, if you want me to try and pull them up.
Don't we usually get those with an application? Don't we usually get those with an application, Nathan?
Yeah, I think I I that was my oversight. I was just focused on the um. I believe I could have asked the applicant um for all the four sides. That was my oversight. I apologize. And if the applicant submitted one elevation on one angle, but. If the applicant has more, if the board thinks it's appropriate to share, as yeah.
Um, is it very difficult to show us? I I don't think it's a big deal, but normally we. In a situation like this, we do at least get to see what all, especially the two sides facing the neighbors. I guess I.
Well, I I.
But those we have, right?
Yeah, we have the one facing the east. We don't have the one facing the south. You know, it's the west facade, but it faces, it shows us what. People on his eastern, the eastern side of his property are gonna see because it shows the windows. From the inside.
Is looking at this, looking at this plan, I actually was thinking maybe this faces the um. The applicant's property uh to it's facing the applicant's face property this part because based on the position in the stairs. So maybe this is actually facing west rather than east. I mean, I've been applicant clarified, but also applicant should be able to share the screen or or he can even email it to me if he wants me to share it. No.
Yeah, um. Well, I can sure um. I can share my screen. I I have, the architectural plans have a view. Looking at the north and west side and. And and the west side. I don't, I don't have a view from. I don't have a view of the side facing east. I I I just, I don't, I don't have, I don't have that view.
However, the one we're looking at, the one you did supply. Shows us essentially. The one Nathan had up. Shows us essentially all of the window configurations that people from the east side will see. Except for the bathroom privacy window.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
And your neighbor, have your neighbor seen the uh the actual elevations, what what the building's gonna look like?
Yeah, I shared, I shared the site plan.
Okay, well, not the site plan, the the elevations.
And the and the elevations and and some of the views as well.
Okay. Okay. How do, how do we feel about this? I I don't think it's a, I don't think it affects my decision. It's just normally we would. See all all four sides, what 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 the plan calls.
I think he's described it quite well.
Right, okay.
Except if this is facing east, what we're looking at. Is that correct?
You're you're looking eastward from the west, from the west side, correct?
But this is, what we're seeing is what's gonna face your neighbor to the east, right?
You're seeing the inside of the eastern wall of.
Right. And what you were describing before, again, I don't think this makes any difference, was two transom windows about eight feet in on either end. And then a privacy window in the bathroom.
And so so the two transom windows are on the south side, so that's this side wall to the right.
Okay, I thought they were all on the east wall, what you were describing.
Yeah, what 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 Nathan has got his hand on, that's the east, that's the south wall. And that has two transom windows. On the, in the garage.
On the first floor.
On the first floor, there'll be, there'll also.
Eye level, yeah.
Above eye level.
Okay.
And there's also two transom windows on the north side, identical lo- location.
Okay.
One of the things that's confusing is normally we don't get views looking at the inside wall. We we get views looking at the outside wall, but I think it affects. My decision here. That's, I think that's what's causing a lot of the confusion. I mean, normally, what what builder, just out of curiosity, what builder are you using? Have you chosen a builder?
We are down to two builders um at this point. Depending upon the outcome of this meeting, we intend to um. Uh select one of them. Do you, do you, do you wanna?
No, I don't need to know, but but the but and then what do you, have you already chosen a designer? Is it a designer who prepared these?
Yes, I used, I used um Rachel Stevens from Maple Architecture. Who I know through the Energy Sustainability Commission, which I which I sit on. I met her and.
Okay, okay.
I hired her to just use the the plot, the the plan views of the space. And and some of these elevation views.
I just, I'm just not used to seeing elevations that are essentially a view of the inside walls. That's not what an elevation is actually. But anyway, um, okay, so um and any, uh, do we? Are people now com- back comfortable? Uh, I think we have a motion and seconded to close the public hearing. So I guess we can now, we can do the roll call vote.
Yeah, actually, I'm I'm apologize. Um, would you mind repeating, who made the first motion and who seconded?
Elizabeth. Maureen seconded.
Yeah.
Yeah, to close the public hearing. And I guess would you um, would you like to check, is that, you wanna check with applicant if it's comfortable with closing the hearing?
Right, so what, by closing the public hearing, we're not allowed to get any more input from you. So is there anything else you wanted to? Say or tell us? I think you've been pretty thorough.
No, I I hope I answered your questions and um.
I I guess I I will ask you one last question, just because I'm thinking about it. Exterior lighting.
Sure.
You have a plan, a lighting plan?
Uh, I I don't have a specific lighting plan, but there certainly won't be any lights on the south or the east side.
Okay.
We'll have a um, a sixteen foot wide garage um. Door and a and a um and an and another exterior door on the west side of the of the structure. There will be, um, there'll be a small, there'll be, there'll be some lighting on the deck, on the top, on the second floor, on the entryway. Uh and there'll be, and there'll be um some lighting on the. On the west facing wall to illuminate the the driveway and the and the entryway into that space.
So that would be on the north side and the west side?
Correct.
Okay.
And as I mentioned, there's a pri- we will do some kind of privacy screen on the stairway. So that any light that could go to the east, to the O'Brien property would be. Um deterred.
Okay.
Doesn't, I mean, if you came here at night, you would see all the other houses whose lights are shining every which way.
Right.
But we would, we would be careful to create a a a solid privacy screen so that so it doesn't affect the neighbors.
And and you'll make, I'm sure your builders and your designer are aware of the Northampton dark skies ordinance that. Put limits on, because no matter what we do, that has to be complied with. Okay, um, all right. If there are no more questions, I guess now we could have the roll call vote on the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, uh by roll call, I'm David.
Yes.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
And Maureen.
Yes.
Yeah, that's unanimous. And then do we wanna have a motion on the application for the special permit?
Can you get that, Maureen? Because I don't have it up in front of me and you've got the map ID, I'm sure, right up there.
Let me see.
And all that, do you?
So.
I could find it quickly.
So I um. I will propose that we vote to approve the special permit request by. Uh to convert a garage with insufficient setbacks into a second home by Eric Winkler. At one oh five Pine Street, map ID twenty-three A one forty. Uh discretionary permit, uh the board must find the conversion of the garage into a second home, which has higher minimum setback requirements. Is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming aspects of the first house. So I uh I propose that we vote to approve this request.
Okay, so the motion is just to approve the requ- the application.
Motion is just to approve, yeah.
Other language, okay.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
Okay, um, any, uh, do we need any more discussion? I'm I'm comfortable with this. I'm very impressed by the. Response of the neighbors, which is not a a um dispositive. Evidence that this does not substantially, is not substantially more detrimental, but it's. But it's helpful, uh, because they're the people who are living there now. Um, and also just looking around the neighborhood, and I feel like it's very. This doesn't constitute a significant detrimental change. And I think, and and I know the city supports this kind of added. Uh dwelling units in a location like this and uh. And the reasons it's being done, I think are, we can all relate to. I think it's 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 a good thing, in my opinion, uh, speaking for myself. So we could, uh, if there are any other comments, otherwise we could just have a roll call vote on the motion, which is to approve the. Application for the special permit as presented. Uh Nathan, is there anything else you think we might wanna include in what we're doing here?
Oh, yeah, possibly, um, I I think I wrote down what you said, David, about why some rationale, why it's not substantially more detrimental. Existing condition to the neighborhood, and of course, board members can add that. And the other thing is, um, you know, you can. Deliberate or not, if you wanna add specific conditions uh to this uh permit. Or you wanna basically, we can just put a finding that the applicant's kinda um. The like the heights, the height and the setbacks are gonna be as proposed on the plans. So up to the board, if you wanna specify some conditions or.
In other words, to clarify the discrepancy between the application and the plans.
Right, yeah.
Be as 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 set forth in the most recent proposed plans.
Yes, um, and you can either, like, we can just note then the finding section of the the decision. Or we can, you can put it as an explicit condition, however the board wants to proceed in. In the past, I think we put in findings sometimes and. Yeah, in some cases, I I remember we put in some very specific conditions for potentially more controversial decisions.
Right, I think we should, the record should reflect it. I think if if we vote to approve this, we have unanimously determined that. We do not believe this is proposed change is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And we could have a condition, just to clarify for the record, that. The dimensions will be of the new structure will be as set forth in the proposed plans. Rather than in the original application and make that a condition. Does that make sense?
You don't think we need to specify the actual measurements, do you?
We could, we could. I I like that too.
I can share the screens if you wanna refer to the measurements.
I I think, I think we remember them.
Yeah, sure, that's good, that's definitely more clear.
Okay, I'll just, yeah, I'll just. Stand for, that will note that, note them specifically measurement on the screen. Uh in the con- in the condition. Yes, I'll note the, I'll note the um stats, the west, um, the west or east side facing setbacks and the height. Or or, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are we approving these conditions clarified? Is that the idea?
Right, are are you saying, Nathan, that you're to follow up on Maureen, I think is asking. Are you saying you're going to insert those dimensions or are we doing it right now um verbally on the record?
Oh, if the, I mean. I let's just, I I mean, I have the plan in front of me, so I'll just read off of here. So yeah, my proposal was that initially, you know, so. David said the dimension will be as set forth in the proposed plans, not in the written application. And then I added, you know, and then for me to do, rather than, I will, I'll, I said I'll note the specific measurements. Uh as shown in the plan, but if you want the dimensions now, I can just literally read them off to you.
Could you read them out loud? So it's just, I think that's probably better.
These are the, this will be all the the setbacks of facing the um east sidelines, east side property line. So which is rear of the neighboring property, the Maple Street number twenty-six. So basically, in the proposed uh plan, the site plan, the applicant asked, applicant put down. Five point four feet uh as the setback from the top corner of the garage house, garage apartment. So looking at the uh basically the the north part of the house facing the. North corner of the garage apartment facing the east side property line.
The northeast corner.
Yeah, northeast corner, yes, yes. And then the southeast corner, it's closer, it's four point three, it's four point three feet. Uh southeast corner is four point feet facing the the east side property line. In the middle, the applicant noted, and some parts of it will be five point one feet, but basically, the setback. In the proposed plan goes from five point four feet in the northeast corner to four point three feet in the uh southeast corner. And in terms of the height. In the proposed elevation, the height will be uh twenty-three feet and uh three and seven eighths of an inch. It's the to the midpoint of the gable roof. That's how the zoning ordinance uh defines the height by measuring.
I thought Mr. Winkler had said twenty-two point. You can't talk unfortunately.
I did, I I did point out that there's a discrepancy, so I I, yeah, we already.
So it's, it's up to the twenty-three point, whatever.
Yeah.
And do we need to say that the increase in the footprint from twenty by twenty to twenty-four by twenty-eight? Is all going to be in the direction of the north and west? I, or do we just leave it as you've got it?
It's from the northeast corner to this. To the southeast corner of the new structure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's important to include that, especially on behalf of the applicant.
Right, but.
It it does not match the application dimensions of building per se.
Yes, um, so east side setbacks. And I think one way to basically put that is that um. The proposed garage apartment will expand, it will not encroach into the existing setbacks of the garage. Or.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
The.
That works.
Dwelling will not encroach further, further into the existing setbacks. Of the existing.
Right, right.
On the east or the north.
Yeah. Facing.
Right?
East or south.
Eastern, right, that's right.
East or south.
Right, right, right.
Because those both border on.
Right.
Neighboring properties.
Yep.
Yeah, so. Those dwellings will in, will not encroach further. Into the existing setbacks of the garage facing the east.
And south.
And south lot lines.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Uh it'll, it'll only expand. And. Toward north and west.
Right, the increase in dimensions will only go to the north and to the west.
The increase in mansion will only expand or only go expand toward north and west.
Alright.
Yeah, I can put that in the condition, so that's more explicit. That way, um, it, if there are any discrepancies between the written application and the plan, the written, I mean, the plan will um supersede.
Right, that's the idea.
Okay, um, I think I seconded it, but I'm seconding the, seconding it again. Just in its current form.
So are we ready for a roll call vote on the motion with those conditions as stated?
Yes.
Okay, um, by by roll call, uh, David?
Yes, in favor.
Um Elizabeth?
Yes.
And Maureen?
Yes.
Yeah, that's unanimous. So good luck with the project.
Yes, congratulations. And I live not too far from you, so I know your area quite well.
I walk by or drive by almost every day.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I have a really good sense of the kind of character of the architecture in the.
Well, we also um had dealt dealt with the pollen. Uh property uh a few, couple of years ago, maybe.
So we got very familiar with.
Yeah, that bree- that breezeway, yes, yeah.
A house on Middle Street also, I believe, built a breezeway between the one on the corner of Middle Street and Maple. Um, they have a big fence in their front yard. They they ended up having to put a big breezeway to connect. Um, they have a big fence in their front yard. They they ended up having to put a big breezeway to connect. Um, the the apartment that they put on the property. It turns out our house is the oldest house in the neighborhood, one of the oldest houses in the neighborhood. It's eighteen fifty. And the the next oldest house is down on Center Street and Park where that used to be a carriage. Uh shop down in that, in that side of uh the block. And those houses are about eighteen forty, so. Our house is is old. So it'll be old and new. Uh we try, we will, we will, our intention is to make sure the house lines match the the new lines of the new structure. Maybe not the roof line, because we have a very steep pitched roof on our house, but. Um, the rest of it, we hope to to match up. And we'll be very happy once the project is started and completed.
Yeah, yeah, well, good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck. Congratulations on thinking ahead.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, take care.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I think Eric, I mean, but David, you were gonna say, I I you can contact me for the layer details.
Yeah, there's there's a process after this where the the formal decision is issued by Nathan's office. It goes. To the city clerk, that starts a, I believe, twenty day appeal period if there were any butters who wanted to appeal. Uh and then you get a, you get a certification from the town, the city clerk, that no appeals were filed. And you bring that, or your builder brings that to the building inspector to get the actual building permit, along with more detailed plans. So, but your your builder would know that, and Nathan can give you guidance on that as well. Okay?
Thank you. And the appeal goes to the core system, not the local government, just to let you know.
Right, it would go to either land court or superior court, but. Seems unlikely.
Unlikely.
You're objecting, yeah, there's nobody here objecting. That's when you get the appeals usually. So, good, good luck. Um, we we do have some minutes to get through, so maybe we can turn to those.
I'll I'll sign off then.
Yes, okay, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck, enjoy.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I was wondering if we could start with the big one, uh, which is um. Obviously.
I went through that pretty carefully and I, Nathan, you just did an amazing job.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't notice anything, but.
I I have a couple of concerns, because is everybody aware that an appeal has been filed?
Yes, and I tried to get, they tried to serve me today, but I wasn't home, so.
Right, I got a copy from Nathan by email when he sent it to Alan. Did everybody get that?
Yeah, and they served me today, and he said, yeah, and I've got two more of these.
Yeah, well, for each board member, yeah.
Right, and I guess he went to probably one of your houses next.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the the um, if if I could just jump in with a couple. On page four.
Uh, can, uh, I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble finding, give me one second.
Second as well. I had them all open and.
Yeah, they kind of all went away.
Too much opened, yeah.
Yeah, that's the problem. Um, you. Page four.
Yeah, you have to go back to Nathan's most recent email. It's an attachment, the minutes.
It's on the one from, here we go, I think.
Fourteen?
No, that can't be right. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble finding.
Yes, date fourteen, you're looking at the August fourteenth meeting.
Right, but it was in his.
The minutes were recent.
It was attached to his email from uh September tenth of three forty two.
Yesterday afternoon.
Yeah, yesterday.
Yep, I have that open now.
Okay, good. Hang on. Alright, so page four.
It's the attachment that says, what, August?
I found it, I found it, found it, sorry.
On page four, um, the section discussions on limits of to the size of a family. Uh, the reason for reading it so closely is obvious. There's litigation pending now. This will become a part of that record for sure. Um. The last, first paragraph under discussions on the limits, last sentence. Um, what I noted was that, because we, I gave the example of um. Gl- it says above, a sentence above, Glover reasoned that with the current interpretation, fifty people would be allowed to live in a single. And I noted, and then Attorney Tine said it later, that the way I would say this is that the subject property of Attorney Tine's. Letter mentioned, I would be more specific, because the discussion was. Mentioned that health and safety code restrictions would limit. The n- the number of people who could live there.
That's correct, because there is a square foot limit per bedroom, per numbers of people, so.
Things. And I think that's the relevant point, and I think it's too vague to say mentioned infrastructure limits, even though that is referencing the same point. I'd like to be more specific, and it was, and my memory is we were more specific during the discussion.
Yes, you were.
Tine's letter mentioned that health and maybe applicable health and safety codes.
Would limit.
Would limit the total number of people allowed. To live in a single housekeeping unit. Um, and then the next one, um. It's same subsection under discussions on the limits, second to last paragraph at the very end. Actually, I I don't have a problem with that one, but but the the last paragraph uh in that section, uh discussion on the limits. At the very end, um. Very last sentence, Glover paraphrased, noting that saying no to a disability use is not necessarily discrimination. If the zoning restriction applies to other uses as well. I don't know if I know what that means. And then it says Bloomberg tabled the topic. I'm not crazy about that. Um. Uh, because, one, I don't think we need to say that. We have control over these minutes. Two, it makes me look like I was stifling. Debate or something, especially because I don't even understand.
I was confused by her point, but I think she was trying to argue that. It wasn't disability discrimination if the reason.
If it applies to other uses, meaning of other.
Right.
Not discriminatory if it applies across the board.
Right.
Um.
I think she was saying that this is a zoning issue and has nothing to do with discrimination.
I think that's right, too. I think those both are correct.
I think the simple point is, can we just delete the Bloomberg tabled the topic? I don't.
Yes.
Remember what that was, and I don't like the way it comes across.
Yeah.
I mean, I would also say, though, that we have to keep in mind that these are video, these are recorded. And we we need to feel confident that what edits we make, uh, that that this, these minutes. Uh, reflect what's recorded in in the, you know, video recording of the meeting.
I agree with that, but I don't think deleting the four words Bloomberg tabled the topic.
In this particular edit, I totally agree, David.
No, but you're right, you're absolutely right.
I guess I wonder about, you know, the prior edit you just made, which I agree makes much more sense. But I don't want to introduce content that we can't back up with what was in our.
But we did have that content. It took a couple of comments.
Excellent.
To get to that point of, I don't know if it was the health and safety code or the building code, or the ordinances or the the regulations, but. I I, that was a point that I'm aware of based on the prior housing law that I've done, and I was, I was glad that people had raised that, so. Recognizing that that's what they were meaning, I feel comfortable reflecting that in the minutes.
But Maureen, your point is well taken, because we know that the attorneys, at least one of the two attorneys involved. Is going to listen to the report.
Yeah.
Um, so I think your point, I'm glad you you reminded us of that. We can, we gotta be careful here. Um, we have, we don't want to.
And I will say that to Northampton Open Media's credit, or the city. Those videos are now much more readily accessed. It it used to be really hard to find them. They really improved it, and I think they're a valuable thing.
Well, that raises a a good point, because we we don't have to approve these minutes now. And I might want to think about, do I want to listen to it again? Uh, we we can circle back, because there's no, there's no deadline to approve these minutes that I'm aware of.
I think we feel really solid about them.
Yeah, especially like the change about health and safety code. If nobody used those words, it's gonna look weird. So let me think about that one, but let me just see if I had some other comment.
I actually think that's very reasonable, David. With the minutes in front of you, to listen to it and make sure everything matches.
Yeah, uh, just under the circumstances.
Although I I just, I want to give Nathan a little bit of credit, because my guess is that that's exactly what he did do, right, Nathan? I mean, you were listening to this as you were writing this up.
Uh, it makes, it's a mix. I was actually writing these as they were happening live.
Yeah, it was live, too.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Um, there was another, you know, I, if if we're gonna get picky, we can get picky now, and then we can get picky if you're listening to it, but. The the response of mine to Alex Bowman around the um activities of daily living. It's a little um convoluted. And and so there's a specific definition for ADLs, which is what he was talking about. And so it's not just, it, there's a specific definition, including ADLs. The definition uh was of ADLs, and that referred to very specific, limited things. Not what he was talking about. So just flag that, Nathan, if you're gonna go back and listen to this and, you know, put it up against the. Minutes, just, you know.
I mean, bearing in mind that it was a four hour hearing.
Hearing, I know, I know.
David, did you have other points? Or were those?
Yeah, no, I had more. Um.
That's what I was guessing, yep.
On top of page five.
And aren't we glad that we have page numbers?
Yes, very handy. Top of page five.
Thank you, Maureen.
There's something that is a little bit misleading. It starts very top of the page, says Silver brought up. The potential discriminatory intent of Glover's clients where they tried to acquire the property, dot, dot, dot. And then it says Glover said it is grossly unfair to bring this up. I think it's important to clarify there. That what she, Glover was doing was, I just insert these words. Glover said that it was grossly unfair of the per- of the property owner's attorney to bring it up. Otherwise, it looks like she's saying it's unfair for Elizabeth to bring it up, and you see that?
Yes, yes.
I don't, and I don't like that. It wasn't, she she wasn't, that wasn't her point, and that wasn't the context.
Right.
Glover, do people agree? Glover said it was grossly unfair for the property owner's attorney to bring this up.
Yeah, I put that down.
That's really um much more accurate.
Thank you, yeah, thanks.
Otherwise, it looks like she's going after Elizabeth, and we, one, it's not true, and two, with litigation pending, we don't want that in there.
Yeah.
Um. Lovely, nice families. Uh, this this couple of sentences later, Glover would vociferously disavow concern for disability. I I don't like that sentence. Um, what what are we trying to say there? What was she's doing there?
I'll just delete the sentence, so.
Well.
Well, I think what she was saying is that there is concern as anyone else about people with disabilities. But that wasn't her, that wasn't what their issue was here.
Right.
Yeah, I think this might be a really good, I mean, it's sort of a precedent, I guess, to compare this to the recording. But this is an instance where I think it's uh probably the right time to make sure that they. Uh, that is, it's like a check and balance to make sure that we've got it right.
You're right, because, I mean, we can always correct it during litigation, but if we can do it now, it's gonna be better.
Yeah.
I mean, the recording takes precedence, I would imagine, over the minutes.
It's, it's.
Right, but.
Verbatim record, but but, I mean, but I think I heard somebody say, maybe we just delete that sentence. Because the next one says Glover noted that it is not discriminatory to think that, maybe we just delete that sentence, because it reads with. With a- a- ambiguously.
Right, although.
That was probably her word.
My experience with Nathan's notes is that when you write something down, Nathan, it's because there's cause. You know, there's reason why you wrote it down, and it may not, in the moment, be as finessed as you might make it. I I. I, yeah, I'm erring on the side of, I'd rather see what actually concurred. The sentence could possibly just go, but. I I always respect when Nathan writes his best effort in the moment to capture.
You know, I totally, I I agree, I appreciate that. And I think, again, I don't, I think over, I think this. Was a remarkable job of putting these minutes, and so well organized, too.
Yes.
Um.
Totally.
Points were. Um, the other one that I'd like to. Point out is that. See, I think the whole thing with Alex Bowman and the ADLs. I would never say that the last hearing, but it was a red herring. He was, he was going off on it, so I'm I'm not sure we have to spend a whole lot of time with it. But a very important point here is under Louis Hasbrook.
Mm-hmm.
Where he said, Hasbrook mentioned, it's a top of page seven, I guess. Hasbrook mentioned a similar use in Burt's Pit Road with a basement rooms for triple adolescents. Didn't he also say there are actually a number of comparable projects? And in hindsight, I wished I had probed a little.
I believe he did.
Because remember, because Attorney Glover was pushing, this, this has never been done before, and he was like, yes, it, yeah, it has. Uh, quite often, and I wish at the time I had probed on that to establish for the record. To refute um Attorney Glover's sort of unsubstantiated assertion that this, this. They never, this never happens in Northampton. This is unique. It's like, and Louis said, no, that's not true. And I I wish I'd had the presence of mind to draw that out, but but my recollection is that it wasn't just one use on Burt's Pit Road.
It was more like, for example.
Yeah, but but wasn't in the context of him saying there there, at least, I don't remember, and again, maybe it's worth looking for his exact words.
And I would also, I have a point to raise about Louis Hasbrook's entry in that. The, just the local building inspector, I think we should be more specific. Either he's weighing in, I, it's like the local building inspector, he's retired, right, and does act as.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. That phrase is misleading.
The former.
It does say spoke as a.
Clear about that.
It does say spoke as a general member of the public, but but it's it's misleading to to have that phrase, the local.
It could be a miscue about.
He he said, he did clarify that it was former, and I I remember that we had to do that, David, when you first recognized him. As the building inspector, and we corrected the record on that.
Change the word local to former?
Except then he said he's former, but he's also still working and doing, I think, inspections of, that's, that's my memory.
I think he does some work for the city still, but he's no.
But he's not as the building commissioner.
So maybe we could say the former building inspector who still does some work for the building inspector's office.
Yeah.
Resides at thirty three Laurel Park and spoke as a general member of the public.
So, yeah, a local building inspector who does some.
We don't use the word.
Former building inspector.
Former instructor and commissioner.
Built, yeah, city building.
Not instructor, he was a commissioner.
It says inspector, but.
Well, he was the commissioner, right?
But that is the inspector, isn't it?
Um, no.
No, inspectors are.
If if I may, uh, it's a little confusing, but yeah, MGM makes distinction, so the building commissioner. Uh, the building commissioner is the highest authority, in this case, our building commissioner, Kevin Ross. A local building inspector means specific thing. It's somebody who who reports to the building commissioner.
Okay.
I I was not clear about that distinction, so um, a local building inspector, and I might be mixing up the wording from MGM, but. Based on my understanding, it does mean something very specific, that's not.
So he was the former commissioner, not not inspector. Now he's an inspector before he was a commissioner.
Yeah.
Now he's a part-time inspector.
Yeah, he's like on call or something. I I think if we're tying him into a role, like that role with the city, we need to be be really clear. And yes, to state that he made it clear that he's um, he had to disclose that he had that relationship with the city. But that he's um weighing in as a resident and a general member of the public.
He, you know, I I'm not sure about that, Maureen. I I don't think he was gonna introduce himself as a former building commissioner. I'm not sure, but David.
What capacity are you here? Because often the building commissioner or inspector does come to these these appeals of his decision. Even though he didn't sign the letter, but but that's why I asked, like, are you here officially? And and he said, no, I'm.
Well, I think before that even, um, David, you recognized him. You you said, I see Louis Hasbrook, who's the building commissioner, and then um, both Louis and I clarified. That he's no longer the current building commissioner. So I'm not sure he even would have identified himself as the building commissioner at all. Had we not gone down that path for him.
I see.
Right, however, his expertise, the knowledge he brought to his contribution. Uh, clearly indicated a knowledge of zoning that was on a level that one would have wondered, like. Right, he's just.
So I think we just say in the minutes that um he clarified that he is the former commissioner, so that's sort of. So that sort of takes in that whole introductory of how that all came about, and it puts in the minutes that he was the former. And then it puts in the minutes that he's testifying as his own.
Right, so, so I would say the former, who, who identified himself as the former building commissioner, and then of, you know, of thirty-three Laurel Park, and who stated that he spoke as a general or was speaking, and stated that he was speaking as a general member of the public.
Do we need to say that he currently works part-time for the?
We could, we could. It's gonna be a long sentence.
I mean, it's a long sentence, but it also, it captures all of it.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, we don't want to look like we're covering something up. Um, and then noted that the building is missing. And I think, I don't know, maybe I'll try to listen to the tape, but I would like to confirm, I was sure he said there were numerous comparable examples.
Right, or a number of something like that.
Maybe not the word numerous, yes, but a number of. So. Because if that's true, I would really, and I, that's my recollection, I would really like it in here, it wasn't just Burt's Pit Road. Because of the fact that Attorney Glover made the assertion that this is unheard of, this has never happened before, you know, this, this is unique. There, there's a reason, because you don't do this to people. It's like, no, that's all wrong. So maybe I'll try to at least find, it shouldn't be too hard for me to find where Louis was speaking and check on that. And then that might have been it for me.
I, I have one really minor thing, and it's only because I look at myself. Um, but, um, page six, it says, Board discusses whether the use constitutes a home, and it's the second paragraph. It says, Taylor asked Glover if the length makes it a single housekeeping unit. The length of what? Length of stay, I think it's.
Yeah, length of stay, yeah.
I mean.
I put that length.
Good catch, good catch.
Thank you, yeah.
So there were, there were a few here and there, just, um, typos, and I would just prefer to just send them to Nathan directly and not bother with us right here.
Yeah, that's fine. We don't have to go through all those, but I would, but this way we all get one more cut at this, or at least anyone who wants to. The other thing I didn't like, uh, is very important. Where somebody said, you're just afraid of being sued. Um, where is it?
Oh, that's by, uh, Mr. Reese.
What page is that?
I'm looking.
And I remember you said we get sued all the time.
Right, and I'm glad that's not in here, but, but what I did, where he, he spoke.
It's, uh, he spoke two times.
Right, it's the second.
Second, yeah, page, uh, page seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Name's Reese, second.
Okay, so, so you said, and thank you, um, for not saying Bloomberg said we get sued all the time, because that really wasn't a helpful remark on my part. But, um, but, and I don't think it affects anything, but, but you said noted he's been working on this type of work for over twenty years. I'm not sure that sentence adds anything, can we just?
Right.
Do you have a problem with deleting that last sentence?
None.
None.
The point is, over twenty years, we've been sued a lot, but, uh.
We can leave it without that.
Overly defensive on my part, um, and, and I don't think it, it does, it's a, a negative thing to delete it. The, his point is still there, that we shouldn't be influenced by the fear of being sued.
Carolyn Mish once mentioned to me when I asked about, uh, some question in the minutes, she said, uh, versus the recording. And she said, well, the minutes are the official record of what occurred during the meeting. So it's not a transcription, we're not worried about this being a transcription of our meeting. Our only reference to, uh, possible interest in reviewing the recording is these areas where we are specific, but it may not capture what we intend.
Right, I agree completely. I'll try to, I'll have to figure out where to find it and all that stuff, because I've never done it before, but and I'll try to just skip through if I can, because I don't want to listen to all.
Four hours.
Uh, but I'll, I'll give it a shot, um.
I'm sure you could just read here, and then when you're a little confused, you could fast forward to that part, I don't think it would take.
It was one.
I mean, we could, we can also drive ourselves crazy with this, and it is what it is. I, we stand by our decision, we would have made the same decision no matter what, no matter what's in the minutes, but, but, so I don't want to be overthinking it, but, 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 uh, but since there's litigation pending, it, it does warrant a closer.
Awesome.
Can, can I ask a question, just in terms of your own, uh, protection, um, the three of you that are cited? I'm assuming that the only thing that would come of this in land court is that our decision would be overturned. I don't think anything's gonna happen to the three of you personally.
Correct, correct. There's no, there's no claim for money damages.
Right.
Some attorneys are kind enough to recite that in the complaint, that these members are being sued. Even the caption of this case says, I believe, something like solely, or at least as members of the zoning board of appeals. And sometimes, um, they'll even say solely as members, sometimes they'll say there, you know, no, no money damages are being sought, or whatever, but, um.
I'm assuming the worst that would happen is they would overturn it, and quite frankly, I think they're doing what democracy allows, so.
Oh, yeah, you know, they have a right to do that.
They're doing, yeah. But David's right, we've been sued any number of times.
Right, and by the way, if you read the complaint, it boils down to one sentence, which is boilerplate on her, her computer, which is we acted in a manner that was arbitrary, capricious, and, and what's the third word, whatever the third word is. That's all she said. She just, she didn't actually say what we did wrong, she just wants to get the complaint filed by the deadline, because she can always amend the complaint later.
Right.
Um, in fact, she may be waiting for the minutes, and she may amend the complaint after she sees the minutes for, she's very thorough, I, I.
No, I was impressed with her, I.
Yeah, no, I've dealt with her over the years, she's very thorough. And he was very good, too, they were both very good.
Yeah.
My own edification, I may listen back through the, skim through the recording, because I, I'm looking at, you know, discussion, the section on page four, discussion of the land court decision. We don't really, in these minutes, address what the land court decision was, we kind of cur, like skirt over that, and and I, I do know what it was, except it's not clarified in this, we just kind of jump into.
Well, it says that, you're, you're right, but it does say that denied the appellant's request for a preliminary injunction. I mean, we could add a phrase, but I'm not sure we have to.
I think she talked a little bit more about that than is reflected in the minutes.
Yeah, I think you're right, because she was trying to make the point that it doesn't matter, if that was a preliminary, it wasn't done the merits.
They're not done yet.
The opposite point, yes, it does matter, it shows A, B, C, D, so. Yeah, I mean, if you, if you hear something, you'll let us all know, or at least let Nathan know, I suppose we could each communicate with Nathan. Okay, um, so should we table this?
Yes, do we need a motion to do that? Or do we just not take it up?
I think we just don't take it up, because we don't have a motion pending to approve them, so.
Okay, but we do have two other sets of minutes.
Which are quicker, should, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's no litigation pending, deadlines passed, no, no, no appeal.
Right, so, um, I, I read through those, I was, those were both continuances. Um, I was there for one, but not the other, but I would move to accept both of them.
Yeah, they were just, they were strictly procedural.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, too. Do we have a second just to, so that, which dates are we talking about?
This is, uh, June twenty-sixth and July tenth, it looks like.
I wasn't at one of them, can I?
I wasn't at one of them all.
Second, can I say?
Yeah, I think, yeah, you can.
You remember the board, you had a chance to read them, and.
Okay, right, and Sherry's here, and she could weigh in if she had any concerns.
Right.
Intent, okay, so I'll second.
Okay, and so all in favor of approving those two sets of minutes, uh, roll call, I guess, please?
Yeah, I guess I'll do the, um, do the three members earlier, um. How, how, so to take the roll call for this time, should I, uh, should he also ask Terry, Sherry to vote as well?
Uh, sure.
I, I mean, I can vote, and.
Yeah, yeah.
She was in one of the meetings.
Yeah, yeah, we're all, yeah, now it is no longer a special permit hearing, so, yeah, I'm gonna take a roll call, uh, by roll call, David?
Yes.
And yes to approve, right?
Uh, yes to approve the minutes for, uh, June twenty-sixth and July ten, twenty twenty-five.
Great, okay, so yeah, David voted yes, uh, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Sherry?
Yes.
So that's unanimous, and by the way, we, we have no meeting September twenty-fifth, our next one is September thirtieth, and that's a variance to add a fourth parcel. Zero North Farms Road, right?
Yes, and for the twenty-fifth one, because it's been continued to the thirtieth, I can just, you don't need to be present on the twenty-fifth, I can just be on the screen and say, hi, uh, it's been continued because of schedule.
That's good. David and I both had conflicts that night.
Several of us were gonna be all right.
Yeah, that's really nice, yeah.
So if there's nothing else, we could move to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, oh, um, has everyone gotten re sworn in, who needs to be re sworn in? I finally did.
Yeah, me too.
They're supposed to get sworn in, although the city clerk told me that they asked Alan Seawald about this, and he said, well, your swearing in from the last time is still valid if you don't, but, but we don't want, I did it the day of the la, that big hearing, because I didn't want that to come up procedurally, that I just got reappointed, never, never got re sworn in.
Nothing like a deadline, huh?
No, I'm just mentioning it that if, yeah, exactly, mentioning that, um, where you're, when you get reappointed, you are supposed to call the city clerks and go in and get sworn.
I got sworn in this week. I, I wasn't, I, there was a little glitch in the consent agenda for my reappointment, so. Um, my, I had to go back to this, my name had to go back to the subcommittee, and then back to the full council, and, um, so it was only as of this past week that I could get sworn in, so I got sworn in, what's today, Thursday, on Tuesday, I think it was.
So just kind of curious where my status is, like, does somebody have to resign before, I mean, what, what happens to?
Well, you have a three-year appointment.
Okay.
So you're.
And, but in the ordinary course, yes, it's each of us moved up when a full member resigned, which we've, I think some of us have talked about doing, so, so.
No, no, no.
If you're eager.
I'm happy staying where I'm at.
I will gladly accept a nudge out the door.
No, 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 I'm completely happy staying where I'm at.
And of course, we welcome, and we say it all the time, we welcome and value the input of all members and associate members at all times. Um, so, okay, so, so I think I heard, did I hear a motion and a second to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn, I think.
And I seconded.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, so, uh, voting to adjourn, uh, by roll call, yes means adjoining, um, by roll call, David?
Yes.
Uh, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Sherry?
Yes.
And we stopped recording.
Yeah, okay, okay, one second. Uh, stop.